Let's go ahead and bring us back to open session. All right, we did come out of closed session. We did not complete our closed session. We will be going back in, but we have covered items 8.2 and 8.3, and wanted to check in with Vice Chair Crandall. Any action taken in closed session?
No action taken.
All right, thank you very much for that. Let's go ahead and move forward with our last open session item, our 1:30 PM, item 6.9, consideration of review of the Mendocino Air Quality Control MOU. The MOU plus its amendment were uploaded as attachments. There are concerns with the amount of work that is currently in the hands of air quality control. We've had conversations in the past to try and provide assistance. We have closed the office to anything other than appointments to try and reduce the random pop-ins to allow staff to really focus on the task at hand. We have provided incentives for hiring, which hiring has, we are flying those positions with the new information about the hiring incentives and so on. There have been some complaints that we've received where it is possible that it could take up to 180 days to go through the process of permitting. Some of this can be whether it's demolition, or some of it could be construction permits, anything related that could create any kind of air quality issue. And I know that my colleague, Vice Chair Crandall, can maybe speak better to it, but also some grants that there's been some complaints about regarding the agricultural grants for upgrades to equipment and so on. And so I wanted to pass it on to Supervisor Crandall. But overall, I wanted to review this MOU. We made some changes. There is a set cost that is connected to this MOU. I believe it's $113.20 per hour. That's been increased with our last conversation. So that's one thing to look at. But overall, I am looking to see if it's possible to start the process for termination of this contract with Mendocino, as it's been happening for a while, and I'm hopeful that they are ready to fly on their own. And I'll pass it on to Vice Chair Crandall, please.
Chair Sabatier, just as a point of clarification for this item, your board is sitting in as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Air Quality Management District. And along with that, on the memo itself, the two portions should be corrected. It's the Board of Directors of the Lake County Air Quality Management District with yourself and then Director Crandall as the, under the "from" section of that memo.
Thank you for correcting the memo. And I apologize, I was told to start it off with we're sitting as the Board of Directors. Thank you for that clarification as well. Vice Chair Crandall.
Yes, no, I'm just adding to this. I know that I've talked with the department and/or the district, and it was explained why and what the challenges were. But when discussing the MOU with Mendocino, I just wanted to see and discuss how we can go about either winding it down or get it, they're overwhelmed and whatnot. Then I think it's just something we should, you know, have a better discussion about or a deeper discussion about and see where we can go to ensure that not only they have the bandwidth, but also what else can be done on the other end with business as usual in the county. So just, or the district on that end. So that's really why I was able and willing to be part of this as well.
And real quick, want to add also, both Vice Chair Crandall and myself had a brief conversation with Supervisor Glenn McGordy from Mendocino County, greatly appreciates the services provided to Mendocino County. And he hopes that if it's necessary for us to do that, he is really pleased with what happened and is supportive of whatever it is that Lake County needs as we move forward. And so again, our goal is what does Lake County need first prior to any time spent for Mendocino when we know that there's a need in the department to be able to process the amount of material that's going through? Want to open it up for comment from Board of Supervisors? Questions or comments?
Just a question. I appreciate McGordy chiming in, but without a real understanding. I think we have a pretty good understanding what the impacts on our district are, but I don't necessarily get from the memo or from your conversation the potential impacts to Mendocino AQMD. So I want to be sensitive to our needs, sure, but I also would like to have a more complete understanding of what early termination might disadvantage those people as well. So, and I don't know that we can answer that question, but it's, you know, we definitely want to be sensitive to the needs of people in our district. And, but that contract didn't happen for no reason. So just like our district is struggling, their district is struggling. And so how can we rise all our boats, if possible, without disadvantaging one or the other party? So in your discussions with the supervisor, did he have any immediate feedback on how greatly that would disadvantage their operations?
I know that we spoke about the reason for the length of the contract. And one of those reasons was we could not find any directors for their air control, air quality management district for a while. Eventually, somebody was found, but needed to be trained. That training has been occurring for quite some time. And at least from specifically one supervisor, he feels that maybe now's the time to let that person take the reins. Not sure if there's a requirement from the state that they still have yet to meet. But again, my concern is solely fixed in Lake County. And let's see what we can do to have a soft landing here without having to completely put Mendocino in a bad place. But I think we are in a bad place. And we need all eyes and all hands on deck to focus on the needs of what Lake County needs. Supervisor Simon?
Section number four, unless I'm reading something wrong, right? Each party may terminate this MOU without cause upon 30 days' advance written notice.
Correct.
Simple, from my point of view. You know, it ends on January 31st. Obviously, we're rolling up, so.
I believe it's June 30th, 2025.
Oh, so that date has changed then? Oh, I missed the amendment, all right. Well, still, you can, termination clause hasn't changed.
No.
We know the issues we're dealing with here. I know we have, in the past, whether it's been disasters or other thing, we've worked collaboratively with Mendocino. I know that when we had the fires come through and they had fires come through, we opened up our landfill also to help, you know, bring that over here. So I think we have a good collaborated effort, but we're going through some issues here in Lake County that we need to focus on. So I'm prepared to move forward to start the ending of this MOU, so.
Any other comments or questions? Let's open it up for public comment. And I apologize, I did not bring Zoom back up. Let's go ahead and start in the chamber.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and I guess, and fellow Board of Directors, correct? I'm Kevin Ingram, City Manager with the City of Lakeport. I'm here on behalf of the City of Lakeport to express our support for either pausing or discontinuing the current MOU between Lake County Air Quality Management District and Mendocino County, given the impact this arrangement is having on our Lake County residents. I just want to start by saying that the City of Lakeport is generally supportive of regional collaboration when it brings benefits to our communities. I mean, no, no question about it. Mendocino County has been a strong supporter of, you know, us and disasters and other needs. However, in this case, the timing of this MOU comes as air quality is struggling to meet even basic service standards for our residents. Currently, air quality office is closed to the public entirely, not just limited hours, but completely inaccessible. I don't think that this is acceptable for a public service agency. We, currently, you know, permit processing times are, I heard 180 days mentioned. I know in an example with the City of Lakeport, we had over 14 months prior to getting, you know, some permits issued through the, through the district. And unfortunately, I've heard that story from others in our community as well. I support pausing this MOU with Mendocino, but what I really think needs to occur is we got to take a significant look at changing our current operations. We need to take immediate action to, at a minimum, get air quality reopened at some level. I understand the staffing issues. I understand that it might not be possible to open up to, you know, full service, but to have it closed completely, I just, I don't think is acceptable. As a public administrator myself, I understand that staffing shortages are a huge problem. We face some. I know, you know, we hear from our private sector folks doing business in the city that that's one of the biggest challenges that they have currently as well is trying to find qualified staff. These are issues that, that we face heavily in our rural community. But I think we can't just sit by and say it's just too difficult to, to hire anybody. I've heard some aspects that the district is unwilling to take on entry-level individuals, and I just don't think that that's a good policy. You know, for example, we've been faced with a struggle in our law enforcement area. A couple of years ago, we were down almost, you know, half of our police staff. We had to look at some really, you know, different out-of-the-box models. We started offering scholarships to individuals. We started paying for their training through Academy. The long lead time on that to get an officer on a street was, was huge. It was a, it was a huge resource issue for us. It took a long lead time on it, but we had to find these creative situations to be able to overcome those shortages. The current air quality process, I think, also needs to be addressed. In addition, you know, I don't think it's acceptable for contractors, developers, and residents to be faced to wait excessively for these long permit delays. The continued closure of the office to the public will only lead to more complaints and issues for the county in the coming months. It's my understanding that CalFire, the South County area, is no longer managing the outdoor burn permit process, that that will be returning to air quality this year. And I'm just worried how that's going to interact with, with some of the challenges that we're already facing. Our Community Development Department frequently hears complaints on a regular basis that they're unable to get permits through. There's nobody to talk to at the district. And I can only imagine that that overflow is being experienced by the many different county departments as well. So in addition to, you know, this action, I think, is a positive step on the MOU, but I really think that your board, or your district in this case, really needs to look at a couple of different items. And one is figuring out some way to reopen, even if it's just minimal hours, to allow the, you know, public to have access. And then I also think that there should be some strong consideration and action plan of some sort. It may be developing some sort of Permit Streamlining Act equivalent. I know for land use and business, or I'm sorry, building permits and stuff, they're subject to the California Permit Streamlining Act. It's my understanding that the California Health and Safety Code does require a Permit Streamlining Act for air quality management districts that are greater than 200, serving greater than 250,000 residents. I know we're exempt from that, but I think we should look at somewhat, somewhat those best management practices that are out there and really try and bring those, those permit items down. So in closing, I think that these two things, you'll represent kind of our minimal standard that we owe to our residents. I think it should be open to the public, and we really need to be looking beyond just the MOU and how can we really get these permits processing times in, in better order? So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sudeep. We basically are developing a gas station in Clear Lake, and we have been facing issues with the air quality department ourselves. The city has been really supportive, and other departments have been really supportive of the progress and the things that we bring to the table, which includes revenue for the city, the county, and, you know, employment in the area. We have been, we started the process back in January with the air quality department. And due to some changes that were requested by PG&E and the Highland Water Company, we had to change the fueling plants. Eventually, we were able to submit the detailed plans with the air quality department, which has been, it's been almost three months now. The construction is halted. We are not able to make progress. We are not able to do anything with respect to the fueling because we are waiting on the permits, and we are losing $50,000 a month just on the interest payments and other things other than, you know, the loss of revenue to the city and loss of revenue to us and employment to the city, the residents of the county or the city of Clear Lake. So we have been facing this issue, and we would really, you know, support the bill that you are proposing here where, you know, we cancel the contract with the Mendocino County so that the, the air quality department can spend their time on the Lake County and, you know, process those permits. Because waiting for, you know, six months to get the permit, especially when you're in the construction and, you know, the rainy season is approaching, it's really not helpful for us. Because if you don't get the permits, in any case, you know, we won't be able to make any progress till March because of the rains and, you know, the, the dirt gets wet and you can't really move anything on that wet dirt. So we have been facing these issues, and we would really, we would be happy once this contract gets over and Lake, the air quality department can go ahead and spend some time on the permits that have been pending with, with them from the Lake County. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Sabatier, Board members. So just very briefly, Alan Flores, City Manager, City of Clear Lake. Supportive of all the comments that we've heard earlier and supportive of the district, but we really need to focus on those that are trying to invest in our community, I believe, and also support City Manager Ingram's request to look at this even more broadly than the agreement that you're talking about today. I'm sure there's some other folks out there. Maybe we need to be turning and seeing if Sonoma County or Napa County or others can help us get this permit backlog dealt with so that we can support investment and economic development in, in our community. I know that's a priority for the board as it is for the City of Clear Lake and the City of Lakeport. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And I see no hands in Zoom and no one else moving in the chamber. I'm going to apologize. I'm going to close public hearing. Director Gerhart, did you want to provide some comments? I apologize, that was not done earlier.
If you could please, if you could please speak in the microphone. Good afternoon. I just wanted to provide a little clarification and then go whichever way the board directs. So to clarify this issue, you know, the Mendocino County contract, with Mendocino County contract, I'm under contract to provide a maximum of 10 hours per week, 25% of my time with Mendocino County Air Quality. Pursuant to the agreement as signed and directed by the board on February 1st, 2022, the original agreement, I'm obligated to work 100% of my time for Lake County and an additional 20% of my time for Mendocino County. So I'm putting in 120, 125% time currently, and I have been since February 1st, 2022, so. So terminating the contract doesn't change the workload for Lake County. That just brings me back down to the 100% time that I'm obligated for Lake County. So with the Mendocino County Air Quality Management District has not actually hired a director, as you clarified. They've hired a deputy, and the training is to provide them the time and experience to meet the minimum qualifications to become the Air Pollution Control Officer, should their board decide to go that route. So they're moving along well, and I think they're on a good track. So that, that can work out, I think, in a, in a good way. The contract with Mendocino does not affect the air district operation, the Lake County Air Quality Management District operations or workflow, including the permit renewals in Lake County as detailed. Now, the, the annual permit renewals that we just went through, we do permit renewals in September and October. So in September and October, we are processing the 600-plus permits that we have to renew every year. We have to review them for compliance. We review them for enforceability. There's a lot of things that go into that. We do throughput and monitor, ensure that they're compliant with all their requirements. So with that, that's a significant time. And during those two months, most permitting is on hold because we just, you know, with two people, actually 1.8 people processing those permits, that's a lot of work for less than, you know, without an engineer to do the additional new permit work. So, so permits kind of get put on hold, new permits, especially for the month of October. September, we work on as much as we can, but October, when we're doing all of the final processing, that's really where the delays occur. District staff, that's, okay. Now, the, the issuance of new permits is allowed to take up to 180 days. This is a requirement of Health and Safety Code. It's best practice under Health and Safety Code. So 180 days is a standard that is used by every air district in the state of California. It's actually even in, codified in federal regulation for federal permits as well. So 180 days is kind of the standard that we go by. We don't give a timeline. We tell people 180 days is the permitting timeframe because that is what they should expect, worst-case scenario. And if we can get it done sooner than that, it's great, you know. So that's, we try to give people a realistic when we are fully staffed, but when we are, you know, we have a backlog, and 180 days is what they should expect just for their, for their planning purposes. Now, in the case of, I was, you know, going to mention the gas station in Clear Lake, the issue there is, you know, we, we received the application in late August. So our normal time period, permitting for time, our normal time period for permitting of a gas station is usually 90 to 120 days. That's when we're fully staffed. We have an engineer or two engineers working on things. That's the normal process because we have to look through regulations. We have to go through compliance. There's a lot of things that have to be, have to go through. We look at proximity to schools. We look at risk. We look at impacts to the community. There's a lot of things that, that happen in that time period. So the, we're still well within our normal permitting time period for that gas station. We did request that they apply in January, and the first complete application we received was the end of August. So we received piecemeal bits of the project throughout the time period. And the fact that they chose to do construction and build the facility prior to receiving all their permits, that, that's something we, we discourage. But we would rather they get their permits all at the same time. We can't issue a permit till CEQA is complete, but they can apply for their permit, and we can have it ready when they are done with CEQA so that it can be issued at that time. So that's what we push people to do, is get their application in early because then we can get it processed. It'll be ready when, by the time they need it. In this case, they didn't. They waited until the last minute. And I contacted Environmental Health today, and they still haven't applied for environmental health permit at that site, for that site yet. So, so they still have more permitting that is required even after our permit is in place. So just as a, you know, for a status update on that. More complex permits, of course, take longer. Gas stations are, you know, kind of in the middle of the road for complexity. But right now, we have numerous geothermal permits. We have a bunch of other permits that, you know, are in the process. And we deal with permits as, you know, in the order they are received. So every permit, we want people to apply early because we process them in, in the order that they're submitted. If there's some other priority that we need to be looking at, then that's something that we can discuss and, and come back with. But that, at the moment, that's how it's been done. That's how it's been done for the 20-plus years I've been here is first come, first served, basically, on those. So sign-offs and of demolition permits and construction permits, they do take time. These are not over-the-counter reviews. Again, you know, most people think that what we do is an over-the-counter permit. We don't. We have to review demolition permits. They get reviewed for compliance with state and federal laws, for asbestos, for other requirements. Construction permits, we are looking at generators. We're looking at emission sources and trying to figure out what they are. And generally, the delay is that we don't get the details. So we'll know that this project has a generator, but they won't know what the generator is, or there's no details on the emissions, or, you know, whether it's diesel, propane, gas, you know, what's going to be used. And so we have a lot of back and forth trying to figure those things out and getting that information so that we can say, yes, a permit's required, or no, a permit's not, and sign off on the project. So there's a lot of back and forth and a lot of work with the applicants to try and get things clear. And again, as they come in, we deal with those, and then we deal with the next one that comes, that's in the door. So they are dealt with in the time, in the order that they're received. So, so some get delayed because other projects take more time than other, you know, than the simple ones. So we try and sign off and get the simple ones out as quickly as we can. But, you know, sometimes if we're in the middle of a back and forth exchange with, it'll take more time, so. And there, there are many reasons that permits, you know, just as a, a general statement, there are many reasons that permits can be delayed beyond 180 days. Compliance issues, there, there are many other issues that relate to that. So with, you know, we can go through individual facilities and processes for that and explain those. But in the, in this setting, that's not really the appropriate place. And I'd have to go through and pull up each of the permits and explain what the details are. So, so with that, if the board were just to terminate the, you know, to start the termination process of the, of the MOU, sorry. My tongue is tied. I understand, and, and we'll take those steps. I would like to request that we set the termination date for the end of December, since we will be, 30-day notice will be into December, and then we won't be billing through a middle of the month and, and cutting off, right, as we go into holidays and stuff. So it just makes the process easier. But other than that, whichever way this board decides to go, we will go with that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. I do appreciate the complexity of the work that you and your department does and also the somewhat uniqueness in the state of California with us being an attainment at the level that we are. So I definitely want to highlight that there are some unique scenarios that don't always play out in other counties. So trying to compare apples to apples does not always apples to apples. But I do appreciate your comments. I'll open it back up for Board members' questions. Supervisor Green.
Yeah. To the item, just the MOU, are we going to terminate it or not?
To the item, just the MOU, are we going to terminate it or not? I think the comments that were limited to that are the most helpful. Nobody's fault, really, that we've kind of taken a deeper dive into all things AQMD, but that's not what the agenda item is. So to me, it's just as simple as are we going to terminate this MOU or not? I think there's been adequate cause to support that particular action, and as far as the invitations we receive from others to take a deeper dive into operations, we're not able to do that today. But I welcome any supervisor want to push that particular agenda to a future date. We can certainly and will continue to support the district as it continues to work through its various permitting challenges. But to me, it's just an up or down vote on the MOU termination, and I'm willing to move forward with that.
For me, it's, it's just a double-edged, one of them is perception, where we're struggling within the department in a very real way. It's not a personal issue. It's a personnel issue that we have. And continuing to have an MOU providing for another county, I get it that it's on, above and beyond, but I feel we need to go above and beyond here in Lake County. And so to me, there's a perception that doesn't help, and there's a, a practical issue as well, where we need to make sure that we're pushing things in the right order of operations in order to alleviate the pain that the department is feeling right now from the lack of staffing. And so, again, we have flown the positions, we have made some changes, and, and I'm, I'm definitely still in favor of moving forward and commencing the, the termination process and looking to entertain a motion.
December 31st. All right. I move to direct staff to turn, to start the, to terminate the MOU with Mendocino County Air Quality Management District and request, you know, that that's done on the date of by December 31st. Would that work? But it's a 30-day notice, so that would go out immediately. I need to put that in the motion, or just starting the termination process? We'll do that.
Just for clarification, the effective date of determination will be December 31st, and so that would be incorporated in the motion.
That is what's being offered.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug.
And with that, that concludes our open session.
We got all.
Oh, all the extra, I keep forgetting. I'm not purposely doing it. So let's go ahead and start with the extra items, 4.1. Extra item A, consideration of an extra item. This came to our attention after the posting of the agenda. We need to reconsider these items before the termination of the days, which we have a limited number of days before we can go ahead and reconsider these, or else they expire. And so this is needed to take action now because we do not have a meeting again until December 3rd at this moment in time due to not being able to have a quorum on the 19th due to the CSAC conference and others, and the holidays coming up as well for the Thanksgiving period and the day after Veterans Day. I'm going to say repeat for each item because that is the way to introduce every single one of those items. And so I am seeking approval of 4.1 as an extra item due to those circumstances.
Do we need to do the A individually for each of these, or can we say a blanket motion so we can do all the As at once? Because all the four items, we can say a motion to approve taking them up as all of them came up after the posting of the agenda, and action needs to be taken on all of them before the next meeting.
Yes, as far as the, the A, sub-A items, I'll call it, could be treated collectively as long as the specific item numbers, in this case, is 4.1 through 4.7, are identified, and only as it applies to sub, sub item, sub recommendation A, which is the consideration for approving taking up these items, 4.1 through 4.7, as an, as extra items, as it came, as all of them came up after the posting of the agenda, it needs to be taken up before the next board meeting. And that would be the form of the recommended action.
So moved.
Of course, with, but of course, with a public comment.
So moved.
Sorry. But of course, with public comment before the motion.
Okay, that will be the motion. Reset.
After a public comment.
Okay. Open it up for public comment. Always appreciate your assistance, County Council. I see no hands raised in the Zoom room and no one moving in the chamber.
All right. Move to approve taking up items 4.1 through 4.7 as extra items, as all of them came up after the posting of the agenda, and action needs to be taken on each of those items before the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. And so first item is 4.1, consideration of continuation of the local emergency proclamation by the Lake County Sheriff, OES Director for the Glen Haven Fire. And if there's no comments from the board, open it up for public comment. No hands in Zoom, no one moving in the chamber. Bringing it back.
Mr. Chair, I motion to consider, or I motion to continue the local emergency proclamation by the Lake County Sheriff, OES Director for the Glen Haven Fire.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. 4.2, consideration of continuation of a local emergency by the Lake County Sheriff, OES Director for the 2024 Boils Fire. Any comment? Open it up for public. I see no hands, no movement in the room. Bringing it back.
Mr. Chair, I move for the continuation of a local emergency by the Lake County Sheriff's Office, OES Director for the 2024 Boils Fire.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to item 4.3, consideration of continuation proclamation of a local health emergency by the Lake County Health Officer for the Boils Fire. Any comments? None. Public comment? No hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move for continuation of a proclamation of a local health emergency by the Lake County Health Officer for the Boils Fire.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. 4.4, consideration of continuation of local emergency by the Lake County Sheriff, OES Director for the 2024 late January, early February winter storms. Any comments? None. Public comment? No hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back to the board.
Approve continuation of local emergency by the Lake County Sheriff, OES Director for the 2024 late January, early February storms.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. 4.5, consideration of continuation of proclamation declaring a Clear Lake Hitch emergency. Any comments? Public comment? No hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back for action.
Move to approve for the continuation of the proclamation declaring a Clear Lake Hitch emergency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. 4.6, consideration of continuation of proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality. Any comments? Public comment? No hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back for action.
Approve continuation of proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. 4.7, consideration of continuation of emergency proclamation declaring a shelter crisis in the county of Lake. Any comments? Public comment? No hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. Bringing it back for action.
Move to approve the continuation of an emergency proclamation declaring a shelter crisis in the county of Lake.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. And we will forever love these on the consent agenda, so we now recognize how much it takes. All right. That concludes our open session items. We will come back to our closed session, and again, we will be taking up items 1.1, 8.1, and 8.4, as earlier stated. Thank you for joining us in open session.